Sorry, missed that. Are we live?
We are live tonight.
All right, sounds good. So do we have a quorum? One? Wait, do we have a quorum? One, two?
There's, there's five of them. You, you have a quorum?
A four, okay. All right then, call to order, City of Hood River Plan Commission meeting for Monday, February 1st. It is 5:32.
Again.
Quorum of the Planning Commission is available. Over to you, Planning Director, for your update. Hey, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have an update of anything other than tonight's single agenda matter, which is the middle missing, Missing Middle Housing Code. We're looking for your recommendation on code that was presented to you a couple of weeks ago. I've taken the code and made some refinements. It includes the full pagination as well as all the, the internal divisions for numbers that you can refer to. And discuss some of these issues with City Council and try to incorporate what I saw as recommendations from Planning Commission for revisions or at least things to consider in the code. I have some exhibits in the code itself I can walk through. But that'll be in the first matter, so nothing.
Okay. Is there an update for two weeks from now? Is there a meeting that day? Do, what do you think will be happening that day?
I don't have anything scheduled right now.
Because that's on a Monday, we would move it to a Tuesday if we were going to have the meeting.
Yeah, um, yeah, I have nothing, nothing scheduled. We don't have any quasi judicial requests that would be coming through, so we should be able to push that if, and then come back in maybe the second meeting if we have any QJR issues, quasi judicial.
All right, and then at the end of the meeting today, we're going to have approval of the meetings minutes, so there's several meeting minutes to be taken care of. Okay. Any questions on the updates?
I guess. Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, um, I'm curious what City Council had to say about the work we've done so far, but I don't know if that would come now or when Dustin does his presentation or.
I'd be, there are certain parts I'd be happy to highlight in some of the issues. I've left some highlights in there and some underlines as cues regarding feedback that I've received from City Council, from builders, from you, and I tried to highlight any changes or kind of pivot points that I felt like were worth pausing for. So as I go through it, I'll, I'll take a pause at some key places that I'm, I'm guessing you're going to want to talk about, or certain places that, that I'd like you to fill in in terms of recommendations so far, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so you'll present. Are we going to take some input from the audience? I see we have four people online. After you do that.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to walk through it if you want to take testimony first. I'm, I'm open to the order. Usually I make a presentation, but I was hoping maybe you have some, some talking points, so I'm, I'd be, I'd be happy to go through the code or first and allow you to, allow them to weigh in afterwards.
Let's do that. Let's walk through. You've got some highlighted areas you want some feedback on, and then we can take testimony after we've gone through that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, hopefully I share a screen here and and I have some documents to walk you through.
Hi, Megan. Welcome to the call.
One second. Maybe, maybe this document's gonna work. Okay.
All right, Miss Middle Housing.
Excellent. So this was in your packet from last week and a couple of weeks prior. Again, it's now a paginated document with revisions that are up to date. The document really has, as it did last, seven sections. The first six of them relate to some of the background purpose statements. How does the document fit with other regulations in the code? What happens when we have exceptions? It discusses opportunities for land divisions, some procedural statements there, and then gets right into the development standards themselves. Those are organized by topic, which are broken down here for you. This is kind of some of the main subject matter areas, and I think I got them all now included on one page. So we'll, we'll kind of go through these one by one as the, as they appear in the code. I'll probably, for those that are less have had less changes, I'll probably take less time with them and just give you a summary overview. But at any time, please feel free to stop and ask for clarification. This now has, and had before, some definitions. This is an important section because when we start to discuss how do you measure things, what do certain words mean, we don't always take for granted that they have the plane meeting. So if they have some special meeting or special standards, this provides an opportunity to, to look at and look into how we're like such as floor area. No one is going to really measure floor area the same way. This section of the code has a very specific discussion on what this floor area mean in terms of this code. Refers to building height and refers you to section K. This is going to be a section that we've talked about before. This is also a section that got a lot of attention from the building community as well as City Council because it has a direct impact on how much you can build on a lot. We also have some unique definitions for some of our duplex or two unit and three unit configurations. Added to this section is a four unit configuration, which prior to this version of the code was not included. We didn't do any prototypes for that, that configuration. It was left to four or more units would be discussed in terms of cottage housing format. Part of the reason was, as you get into more units into a single structure, the massing becomes increased. And so that was a configuration that was not included initially in this. It's not staff's recommendation, but we heard interest and feedback to have it at least considered and deliberated, so it appears in the definition section itself. Our purpose statement is typically something that you will see in, in codes. Why are we doing this code? What is the opportunity? What are the goals? It's really kind of a high level lofty standard, but helps, should help frame some of the standards below. Our relationships to other codes, this code where it conflicts with other pieces of the code will prevail. That's an important way to try to reconcile any differences we have in our codes. Land division, this code does allow a land division to occur within these developments and prescribes an expedited land division process. And it also provides the opportunity for an applicant, if they wish to go through the standard discretionary process, which is just, is just a provision opportunity. They're not forced to go through an expedited land division. They could go through the non expedited land division. The last highlighted piece here has to do with covenants and restrictions. Heard back from some of our development community, they have concerns about small HOAs being put in place, being onerous and expensive for two unit, three unit, or essentially smaller HOAs. I appreciate that. I do not have a recommendation on how we would handle common areas and common problems. So the reason why this, this appears in the code is because I have every expectation we are going to have common provisions, common driveways, common stormwater features, common landscaping. This provides, and in some instances, common walls. This is in to help provide an opportunity for residents, future residents to self-police or as or have self remedies to resolve disputes and lay down common expectations with their neighbors. And also provides a vehicle for them to address those issues. So where we have common elements, we need to have some assurance, or I recommend some assurance, that we have a vehicle for people who are moving into these areas to be put on notice that there are common responsibilities and common features. Getting right to the code and right from the front, I, I put a side by side comparison in here. This is not my expectation that this will live in the code, but the reason why it's in this, this piece in particular is it, it provides a little bit of perspective from where the code stands now, the first draft that you saw, as well as some of the changes that were made as a reflection of conversation that we had with Planning Commission, as well as some of the recommendations we received by some of the development community as well as input provided by City Council. The big change in this is if you look from the R1 draft code, which I presented to the white column, which is revisions to be presented to you, Planning Commission for feedback, really come in the R2 and R3 standards, there was a request to consider a, an even more progressive approach to allowing or permitting smaller dwelling units. So as the housing or the middle housing code was initially developed, we separated dwelling units and allowed a, a greater number of units to be built under the same area so long as there was a size cap. And you can see that in the light green where you see one dwelling for every 1,500 square feet as the area ratio. In the subsequent column, there's now a provision that talks about units that are under 800 square feet and an added bonus that now allows them to be built at one for every 1,250 square feet for both R2 and R3 zones. It's significant shift. When it comes to R2 and R3, essentially, the current code will allow two dwell, the draft code would allow three, and this section would as drafted would allow four smaller units every 5,000 square feet. So you could look at it as two units allowed, three units allowed, or four units allowed, depending on the configuration. It's pretty significant when it comes to the number of dwelling units permitted in an area. So if you have a recommendation on, on how you feel about the revision to add another really category for real, for smaller units, I'd be happy to, to take that down and take some feedback from you. Everybody at once.
Well, I guess, I mean, should we deliberate here or just ask questions? Because I have some definite commentary from reading the comments, getting an update from the City Council meeting on all of this stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I'd love to take it now.
Should that seem reasonable, Mark?
No, I think that's, I think it's perfect while we're on the topic, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, I sent out a list of the 15 things that I had gone through in the code. What, a couple of my big ones are probably the quadplex one, where I think we should have a little discussion on, because there's like from a real estate and financing and a bunch of other perspectives, there's a reason to do those in my book. And then on this particular one, I, I think that what has been proposed by a couple of commenters and the Portland infill code is to do something that incentivizes. I think Heather, Heather made some great comments, like what happens if you have a 4,900 square foot lot? Can we do some calculation that's based upon something that's not limited to the specific lot size and I just be interested, and I understood from council that they had I talked to Kate and she said, yeah, that, that they had seen Heather's comment and thought that seemed interesting, and we're looking for some code concept to get fleshed out to consider. So I guess that's my comment on this section. Anyone else?
I think the only thing that sort of struck out for me, I mean, I know this is R1 draft code was a couple of weeks ago, but you know, just this idea of, and I'm looking at the R1, R1 2,500 square foot gets you a dwelling. Two, two lots. You can put two dwellings on it. You don't really get to three lots, but you know, if you had an oversized R1 lot that was 8,000 square feet, right, you could put three dwellings on it. And it just seemed to me if you were in a neighborhood that was in R1 neighborhood, and I appreciate there's not that many left in town, all of a sudden you could have three units on that. That seemed to be maybe a surprise. I think the city people, city people, the public would be quite surprised to happen, have that happen next door to them a year from now. I thought that might be worth a discussion point with everyone. I mean, granted, there's some there's some limitation to the size of the unit, which we'll talk about, but, but overall, it just, it just seemed like like a pretty drastic shift from what we have now.
I was also struck by I was gonna say, I had a, I noticed, I think it's Greg Crafts, one of his comments was that there's no demand for one bedroom units. And that struck me. I'd really like to get some more conversation around that, because I think what we, we want to make sure we incentivize developers and builders to build these things, but they've there has to be a demand for making 800 square feet and less, it's gotta be a single bedroom.
Comment I'll put out to that is that I, I can't speak specifically for Greg, but I have a fiveplex over on 13th that's right up the hill from Kickstand, and it's all one bedroom units, and they're rented all the time. So I think Greg's comment could be related to a purchase unit, a sale unit. And I think we kind of keep getting into mindset of we're building these for one or we're building these for the other, but certainly and I asked, I asked the planning staff to send out a duplex that had got built by Joel Commutson that has, you know, their one bedroom units. He says he's renting for 13 or 1,400 a month, and they were like, as soon as he was done, had a, a list and could rent, you know, rent more of them. So I, so I think Greg's comment might be specifically related to the sales side of it, but there's tons of one bedrooms manned in the rental side.
All right, so from this, if we don't have any more discussion right now, keep moving.
Yeah, one, one question back, Dustin, back to Mark's comment. How, his, he was expressing the thought that in the R1 zone, we could get to three or more units on a lot.
Well, if it was an oversized lot at, at 8,000 or 7,500 basically.
Is, does that, do you agree with that comment based upon your understanding of the code set? Dustin?
Yeah, it's one dwelling for every 2,500, right? So it's not necessar, that would be two on a standard 7,000. If you had an oversized lot, you could end up doing upwards of, for say for a cottage, if you had a 15,000 square foot lot, you could end up with six.
Okay.
It, it scales, there is a ceiling, and, and I, I included a side by side comparison for you on in your packet as well, and I have that up here. I could go, I could go through that as well.
And didn't, what's this, what's this, what's the status at the state level for allowing in urban areas duplex, triplex, quad on, or what, what is it on any lot inside an urban boundary?
For cities, Houseville 2001 and, and the subsequent OAR from 66040, I believe, will require cities over 10,000 to allow a duplex on any lot. And then cities between 10,000 and 25,000 or in the metro area will end up with, with, will end up with quad in, in many ways, quads on corners, but for a, a city such as Hood River and right now, there's nothing required within five to 10 years, depending on how we grow, and we pass 10,000 people. This would, if the, the law stands, would require the city to allow a duplex on, on any, on any lot that allows a single family home. And that would be that would be mandatory.
Okay, thank you.
So when I first, just a side note, when I first developed some of these concepts, I asked City Council whether they wanted to contemplate that, whether the city as a city that will become possibly 10,000 people in the not so distant future, would they want us to consider and allow the duplex provision, even though it's not mandatory now that it would be mandatory? So they, they did indicate at that time that they wanted us to look at the duplex aspect of 2001, rather than wait for us to become 10,000 and become mandatory. Moving along, these are the configurations that the units can come in. This was based upon prototypes. They initially included the two unit configuration, attached or detached, three units attached or detached. And then the introduction of the four unit, which was initially not submitted in the original draft, and then cottage cluster. So part of, part of the issue with the four unit is it starts to overlap our definition of multifamily in the city. Into the setback perimeter buffer yard. When we talked last, there was an indication in movement that we would use landscape area rather than a lot coverage area or some other metric to determine how much open space or not built space was included. So based upon that, you're going to see more intentional discussions in the setback and perimeter yards and landscaping. These numbers and the measurements and distance basically all follow the setbacks as set today in the underlying zones with the exception of the rear buffer yard and the alley buffer yard, which was something that anticipates a greater use and reliance on rear yard access, side yard access. So there's some unique provisions here that allow that allow a greater latitude in these areas. If we want to encourage alley use, direct in alley parking, it's going to be pretty difficult to require some landscaping between the alley and the area that you're trying to take access from. So there's some specific provisions that are set aside in here to address that scenario.
But Dustin?
Yeah.
Do, do you have like a diagram that shows like where all these things are? Like I was trying to figure out what is an interior side buffer yard?
That's a side yard, that's not a, side yard, not on the street. Side yard, not street side yard.
Okay, so in a, on a corner lot, you would only have one of these?
Yep.
And in a standard, single frontage lot, you would have two of them?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just, that's the interior. So that's the difference between public, we just call it public, public street, street yard buffer inside. So interior side is side.
Makes sense.
These two, same scenario, garage setback is 20 feet. Garage buffer yard from the alley is actually less than it is now. Allow, but still requiring a five foot setback. Lot coverage, I've stricken based on our last conversation. Public street dedications, this is essentially a placeholder that says you got to comply with the street standards. I don't want there to leave or undergrounding of utilities, so no, no confusion that just because we're following this code, that all of a sudden this grants some approval of departure from, from our current street standard. I highlighted the street connectivity because that was raised as an issue. This is a direct excerpt from our subdivision code. And the requirement comes when we have subdivisions, we want to create walkable blocks or more manageable block size. We don't end up with really long street frontages without breaks. So that was imported into this code with the expectation that these would also in, in many ways be a subdivision. Given the size restrictions on a lot of these, meaning the number of units and the infill, the likelihood that this will be applied or be triggered is pretty small, but it's in there just in case we do end up with the circumstance where we need to consider the block length. Frontage improvements. Basically a reiteration of sidewalk and street trees. These are pretty important standards, especially again, now we're getting into some narrower landscape provisions, putting the emphasis on this, which is a pretty important design standard for these type of developments is included. The frontage requirement is waived here with the expectation that we will see not only on the street, but lots of off the street, such as our, such as a townhouse configuration now. As well as PUDs. Requirements for everyone to be served off public sewer, individual water and sewer services. Parking, and I'll take a pause at parking. This was a spirited conversation currently in the code as shown below. Each of these units will require two parking spaces. The draft code that came back to you included one space, which is still included in the code, and I know there was some discussion that was raised by certain members. They wanted to make sure that this receives some attention and deliberation as well. So that's the number of units. The the piece that I've highlighted here regard, is in regards to parking in the perimeter setback not being allowed. So that's again, another design standard that is, is pretty, it's significant, it's significant in terms of where we store cars and how these developments look.
Dustin, can I comment on this? Or how is this, how is this meeting working? I'm sorry I was late. Are we deliberating aspects of this later, or are we commenting on this now?
Yeah, I think I'm looking for comments right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Deliberate later too, as we go through it.
All right. Regarding number four, the one bicycle storage space. Could we specify covered? Or how does, how does everybody feel about that one?
Isn't that what the garage is for? No, I'm kidding. I mean, it's like, I don't think I'd leave my bike outside, especially a new e-bike. So I, I sort of feel like, it's kind of like curb cut, the curb cut discussion. We, we create this thing on the outside, nobody uses it because they put their, their their bike in the garage.
Yeah, I don't think Erica. I don't think we should, if these small housing developments, I don't think we should require covered bike parking. It might end up becoming the trash repository, or you never know.
Okay. That's a, a covered sheltered spot as a make or break for many people without cars that want big cargo bikes. And in fourplexes and above, it's really efficient to just build one covered storage facility for like six bikes or eight bikes. It's pretty economical. And the other comment I want to make about parking is in our last two meetings, the first meeting that we had of the year, Sacramento City Council voted 9-0 unanimous to eliminate parking minimums, and then the following our last meeting, Berkeley City Council met and voted unanimously 9-0 to Berkeley City Council met and voted unanimously nine zero to eliminate parking minimums. And last year, a city more our size, Hudson, New York. I don't know if, how many of you have been there, but it is very much like Hood River, its population 6,700, very arts and ag centric. And they just voted last year to eliminate parking minimums. And I just want to read a quote from the mayor of Berkeley. When they deliberated, he says, "The parking changes approved this week addresses two major issues facing our city, climate change and housing costs." He goes on to say, "Requiring less parking in new projects decreases the cost of the construction and also addresses the reality that people are opting to use other forms of transportation and moving away from a car centered society." I don't feel like we are doing enough by going from two to one, especially for, for, fourplexes and under. And it's, Tina touched on this last meeting. It's a major equity issue for both low income and people with disabilities. I just read that 35% of people with disabilities do not drive. And so they are forced to pay more for their housing, even though they are not bringing a car. This, this issue is just a big, it's a major equity issue. And we're, we're falling a little bit behind on what, what's happening nationally.
You have recommendations from the Home Builders Association for point five, I think, to point seven five. That was what came from the HBA Portland at your last meeting. They didn't send, they sent that to me afterwards, so I didn't have it before. They sent it directly to you. I know, and I believe Amy mentioned as well in her notes to me that she would be supportive of point five to point seven five. But that is, that's a matter of discussion and recommendation for you all.
So how does that work? Say it's like a fourplex and they have to require two parking spaces. That means that two of the units could sell or be rented without having to pay for parking. And two of the units would be sold or rented with parking. Am I right?
Yeah, the parking is, it's just a number. So if you had a unit and we, I have an expectation that you, most likely, if they're not built with garages, they'll have some common space or common set aside. There's, there's nothing that requires the unit to be sold with the parking space. That's the decoupled. So you may have someone who has a larger unit, a 1,500 square foot, they want two spaces. You may have someone with an 800 square foot that doesn't want anything. They're not tied to the units themselves, as written this way. There's just a number. So you could average. So we're.
Well, it's up to the developer to decide, right? I mean, wouldn't they, they could, they could sell it that way.
Right. We're just looking at the total number of units, units to parking spaces, not coupling them together.
Yeah, it seems to me that this is a big piece of what we're after. Is we are looking at writing this whole new section of code to do something that currently we can't do, right? And so to just kind of fall back on some of our established parameters doesn't really make much sense. I mean, the idea is to, let's be a little bold and be progressive and try to get the kind of housing that we don't currently have. And I think a big piece of that is dialing back this parking requirement for, I mean, you know, we could talk about this for an hour. But I mean, for a lot of reasons, I think we need to dial it back. And one, a big one of those is just to give the developers more flexibility. I mean, look, we already had a debate about, you know, do one better, is there a market for one bedroom units? I mean, how do we not know that there isn't a great market for no parking units? We, you know, again, we don't know because we've never let the market decide. So I feel like if we eliminate the parking requirement, let developers decide. You know, maybe they want to do a mix where, you know, certain units have a little garage or a parking, you know, pad or whatever, and others don't. And they, and that's how they can, they can maximize the marketability of their units. And as Megan points out, you know, and as I mentioned last week, I mean, you know, we really need to kind of consider the fact that just because for the last 50 years, everybody has demanded having, you know, space for their cars, that's not going to be true 50 years from now or five years from now. And so I really think that this is our time for this one little housing, you know, housing code. So let's be a little bolder. And, and I say, give the developers maximum flexibility. Why, why wouldn't we? Let them decide. They don't want to build stuff that no one's going to buy. So if they think parking is important, then they'll figure out a way to get some parking in there. But why are we baking it into the code? It just, it doesn't seem to, to work for what we're trying to accomplish here.
It seems like there's.
There's three of you. Sorry, Bill.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, this is my comment way back at the beginning when I had a comment on something. I feel like what we need to do is let Dustin get through this, take testimony, go into deliberations and then have an organized mechanism that we talk about every one of these things and then take some votes on the items.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Mark?
Yeah, that does.
We've got some opinions and we're not, we're not doing anything about them, I guess. So.
All right, we'll move on to access and circulation. This goes back to limiting the number of curb cuts as measured at the property line and how much your front yard as well as the site can allow for access. This also mandates access through the alley if you do have alley access. Really promoting that once again, allowing one single driveway approach per building site frontage is a key consideration. And then one item that we did hear back from the development community, which I think I included a graphic here, was a concern that some of the prototypes didn't have the radius that allowed some turnarounds onsite. So within that, I included a criteria that talked about, and this is from ITE and some turning templates for passenger vehicles that would require a minimum inside 10 foot turning radius and outside 18 foot turning radius, which looks something like the candy cane that you have here. And I could dial that up and then a turnaround provision.
Could you explain that thing on the right? Because I couldn't read it and it seemed like it was upside down or backwards. Mirror.
This.
The whole graphic was, yeah, I mean, both of those. I was trying to figure out what you were trying to tell us.
Oh, the opportunity to have a turnaround. If you wanted to have a turnaround, it would have the same type of configuration.
Got it. Okay. Team, it'd have radius requirements on turnarounds.
Right, 10 foot. And again, it would be the same 10 foot inside, 18 foot outside, which is really what, again, if you have a large vehicle, it's going to be a little more challenging to do that. But it's really in response to trying to design in, you have internal parking to allow people to actually, with enough space to turn around. That was developer feedback. This section, we're now into landscaping, stormwater and LID. The first three sections talk about LID as a recommendation. We want to encourage, but not, this does not require the use of low impact development. But, but it provides some of the recommendations and the hallmarks of low impact development, the use of vegetated swales, limiting impervious surfaces. Really, it's, it's intended to, as an encouragement. These are going to be infill sites and they're, they will be challenging to do. Landscaping, this has been developed quite a bit, really as a result of moving away from our maximum coverage area to a minimum landscape standard included is, again, once again, a clip from the side by side comparison of where we start with the, with our current code, what was drafted and where we've ended up in some of the recommendations that are coming to you tonight. And look of, of this and some of the issues that were raised. I have another graphic for this, if you want to, once we dig into it. The moving from an R1, which was essentially 48%, max 40% standard coverage to essentially what would be a 70% coverage or 30% landscaping standard, all the way to R3 and C1, which is really a pretty small departure, where we have, you know, upwards of 63% area now to about 70%. It's only about a 7% bounce in that area. And I have a side by side as well as a graphic we can get. We heard some concern about the amount of change, especially in R1, of what that could look like. So I can show you in graphics what that change would be. We pull up, this is, this is currently what an R1 lot, the setbacks would require. This is about 31% shown in green. Here, the depiction here shows essentially what is built, the amount of area that would be built or allowed to be covered today in this dark black. And this would be essentially the balance of the site. And the picture next to it would be the standard 31% set aside for setbacks. This includes, if you wanted to go to 35%, you would add that much area. And 40% would be both blocks included. So that's the difference of, of a 30% site essentially and a 40% in R1.
Could you, so to clarify that, are you going to show us a different, like R2 or something?
Yeah, I'll show you what R2 looks like as well. So this is the R2 look right now. The setbacks in R2 are about 33% plus or minus landscape area, omitting the driveway. This would be an R2 lot that would have 40%. So the exterior coverage plus this area would, would essentially be a 40% landscape area on a typical R2 lot. And then, as I mentioned, R3 is essentially 63% now. This would be a 69% coverage on an R3 lot. So a pretty, pretty minimal, 7% difference now. I didn't depict that one. This is what, and when we talk about, I can go back to that. This is what this, this is an R1 configuration, essentially what the floor area or the coverage area and what a 28 foot and 38 foot kind of massing would be. This is essentially a 30% coverage, 35% coverage, 40% coverage. And then R2, excuse me, this is, this is essentially what R2 looks like in, in mathematical area. A 33% coverage, this is a 40% coverage amount. This is a housing unit that would be 20 feet to the eve, 25%, 25 feet to the peak, 28 feet to this ridge, 38 feet to the upper portion. You know, I'll save these for some of our height conversations. So within here, you have the recommended, the amount that I heard before, 30%. And I have alternates that have been included in here that would, that would consider the upsizing or the amount that would change for landscaping. Within the landscaping schedule, using those areas, those setbacks included in this are planting rates, mathematical planting rates that would, are intended to provide some coverage amounts of living material as well as trees and shrubs to serve as a buffer. Currently, there are no landscape standards in this area. They only are required to be not built with parking and/or driveways or houses.
So could you explain this? I was, I was getting a little confused of, or maybe I thought about this in two different ways. I'm thinking that every particular prescribed distance, there has to be something in the ground. I was like, that sounds pretty prescriptive. We're just saying, in some particular area, there needs to be this much and it can be grouped or organized from a design perspective?
Yeah, I think we just, I'm just looking for a number. So it doesn't mean it's like, I don't think it's intended to be, you know, a sentinel. You know, every five feet, there's a plant. I think that would be the number of plants. So if they were grouped in plant beds or built around features, I'm just looking to check off a number. So it takes some of the artistry out of it and boils it down to mathematics. So again, referring to the same distance setback, alley buffer, basically nothing, nothing again, in the alley area. And credits for existing trees preserved. So the idea, if you preserve a tree onsite, we would, we would credit back, much like we do for street trees. Note here, all the open space designations, all the common private open space have been omitted. This makes a single statement, pedestrian access shall be provided to the units via path. This changes the idea that you would be able to, or be forced to walk to your unit through a driveway. It really emphasizes the idea of pedestrian first design and the human scale of this development.
Can I jump in with one question before we leave this landscape stuff? So when we're calculating this 30%, could you go back and make sure we understand how that would be measured and what are, what contributes to it? Meaning.
If you are.
What I mean, is there a requirement, the thing is green? Does it have to be a living material in that area? Is it, it can't be hardscaped or like, what's the definition of this? How are we going to, how are you going to look and add up this? Let's say we pick 40%. What are you going to go to do to add it all up?
And if you had that path, like on this particular drawing, if you had the five foot setbacks on the side yard and you want a four foot path, are the, you know, can you put a four foot path down that side yard and that's called open space? Or as Bill's saying, is it, if it's hardscape, it counts as one thing? If it's bark mulch, it's something else, right? So what do we do with that?
Yeah, so in the perimeter plantings, that's part of the rate is it intends to have a certain amount of coverage that occurs. If you're going to require one tree every 30 feet, you end up with a certain amount of coverage. Five shrubs per every 30 feet, you end up with a certain amount of coverage. We could be more specific on what does or does not include landscaping or hardscape. The walkway is limited from the side yard. So you wouldn't be able to just side yard or essentially sidewalk your side yard. There is a permitted encroachment that we'll get to that allows a certain amount of that sidewalk to occur within that landscape. But you would have the opportunity, it's stated, I believe it's two feet would allow to be encroach, allows an encroachment. But you could definitely specify, do sidewalks count, hardscape, decorative hardscape count as, as landscape or not? In this, in this instance, it's, it is basically regulated by, this is what is in, is in the side yard setback.
Could you, just because we're asking questions right now and not delivering, could you take us back up to that landscape code section and show us where we are getting the definition of what it is? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it doesn't define what landscape is. It basically says, you're going to end up with a 10 foot yard. And you're going to end up within that yard.
Okay.
These trees and these.
Well, I guess where I'm going is if we decide to, you know, all the setbacks are X, but if we decide to up that buffer from 30% to 40% or something, we're going to have an extra 10%. And I'm just trying to figure out like, what could it be? Or what does it need to be to meet that additional requirement? And so, so what you're saying so far is we don't have any definitions around what that would need to be if we increase the requirement.
Yeah, if you increased it, you, you could, you could definitely cut a hardscape or decorative hardscape, or you could say it needs to be living material.
Okay.
But right now, just as it's written, is the buffers cover the third. But right now, just as it's written, is the buffers cover the 30%. Moving from that, we're into dwelling area size restrictions. And this is where that definition of floor, floor area comes into play. Initially, we did know, we're not considering a ceiling or a ceiling, we would back into them. But based on some of the changes in the buildable area, the amount that we're looking at by way of landscaping, some of the, the discussions around ceiling height, the amount of developable area really started to warrant a, a development ceiling. Otherwise, you would end up with full units or could end up with full-size units on these lots. So that's why this was introduced. This reflects the definition from above on how do you get to this square footage, which is an important item to have because we will discuss it when it comes to, how do you calculate, what is this square footage and what counts and what doesn't count? The standard here that really provides people notice that you may not be able to increase the size of your dwelling unit once you buy it. That's an important disclosure for buyers who buy something at 1,500 square feet, if that's the number, and with the expectation to increase that, that, that is something that we don't want to make a surprise to future property owners. Continuing on the building orientation and separation, two key features here. Facing the streets, not turning your back on the public domain, as well as keeping a 10-foot separation between detached structures. Now down to building height. This is the way the code is drafted based upon the graphics now, and I know you all will want to discuss it. As described in the previous definition, it makes mention of this average grade calculation. This is something that the current code does not use now. We don't have an average grade. We use from essentially on sites that have less than 10 feet of slope. We're measuring 28 feet from the upper portion or within five feet of this wall. For sites that have more than 10 feet, we're measuring 10 feet above the lowest portion and 28 feet from there. This take, and that's from original grade. This takes into account, it's mentioned as finished grade. With the anticipation, we're going to see multiple units on a smaller site. Leaving it as pre-development grade becomes really difficult to try to balance stormwater, try to balance driveways and make some of these buildings fit together. That's why the finished grade calculation comes in. Also, our current code is just difficult to administer and results in different outcomes, variability and outcomes. This is look for a pitched roof, standard being 25 feet, intended to allow two stories of development and provide a height benefit for a pitched roof configuration. The shed structure, again, look, it's paid to allow for two-story development, but now becoming increasingly restrictive at the roof height. Flat roof configuration, 20 feet, two-story look, and increasingly restrictive at the, at the height. And we can go back and deliberate that. Architectural features. I think we heard from you that the trim was not a, an ideal, an ideal feature. I did hear somebody mentioned one and a half inch, but that has been eliminated. This was a request, wall elevations that exceed 20 feet in height at any point shall include a wall break or plain break at least two feet in depth and six feet wide. This was mentioned, not necessarily six feet, but mentioned by our development community on the impacts of tall walls and their, their overall massing, the intent to break up those elevations and provide a little relief. This goes back to the front porch standard requirements for all houses to have a front porch. This is really back to engaging the public domain, providing some pedestrian scale and some orientation of, of the units themselves. Six feet by 60 are the two standards. I eliminated the entire area, the front porch must be covered and put the covered section of the porch should be 60 feet. So just in case somebody wanted to do a larger porch, that it, they didn't all of a sudden get forced into covering something more than what they would, what they would do. So we just left it at a minimum. Here's the amount that you would have to cover. If you wanted to do more, you're not going to be forced into a design, different design standard. This piece, the front porch shall be at least 50% of the total elevation. That was raised as a, as a constraint, concerned that if you had a front-loaded garage, you would end up with a 12-foot porch and some challenges to, to orientation. There's a reason why I highlighted it just as a, as a note. This is an added list of permitted obstructions. We had a couple of these in the last iteration, but I wanted to be real clear about what is and what is not permitted. Currently now in the code, we have a, a similar item category, which has resulted in some confusion, difficulty. This is a specific list of items that is allowed in the yard and setback areas. So we've gone from a similar item list, which can be discretionary, which we need to avoid, to a very deliberate list of, of known quantities here. And I think this is the, we've got a couple more to go. Fences requiring or being fence height along the exterior of the property, be four feet. This is gonna work against somebody putting a six-foot tall fence in a development that is supposed to be forward-facing. Also limits some six-foot fences to be installed within the interior of the property, separating at that time what was considered to be common spaces. This is one of the catch-all features that talks about accessory dwelling units, accessory buildings, existing units that could possibly be built into or expanded to a middle housing. You, we may have some single-family homes out there that would be eligible to have other development built around it rather than a full scrape-off infill. There is an opportunity to have some of these things knit within the existing building stock to save an existing home. This provides that opportunity right here. And it's written in how that would be administered. There's still a limit on ADUs within this code. Because the code really starts to play units that are 800 square feet and less and adds a density. This, there's really, those start falling in line with what could be an ADU. It still doesn't include an ADU provision on here. It already contemplates smaller units. And then in this location, there's a, there's a prohibition on transient short-term hosted home, shore, vacation rental. That, that was my add on here. Welcome. Looking for recommendation from planning commission on STRs. And that's the, that's the code. That's, that's all the pieces. I can stop the share.
Okey-dokey. Well, now why don't you leave the share going? Well, actually let's stop the share. Shall we contemplate some comments from the public? I see we have four people on. If anyone, you want, you know, like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. Commissioner Irving, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I think now would be a great time for public comment.
Yep.
John, could you remind us? Okay, remind us how to raise your hand?
Sure. Everyone here looks to be connected by a computer, so there will be a raise hand button on your screen.
Thank you.
All right. Heather, you should be on. Unmute yourself and then go ahead. You're, we still don't hear you. Oh, here we go.
Okay, good. Took a couple pushes of unmute to.
No worries. Okay, we can hear you now.
So I'm Heather Staten from Thrive Hood River. And I've got a couple of comments. I think the, the code is really looking very good. There's a few things that we think should be tweaked a little. And I wanted to start with something that you were talking about, Mark, about how big a change it might feel like in the R1 zone. And I want to preface this by 2,500 square feet is what, or allowing a duplex, which is essentially creating two 2,500 square foot lots, is something that every medium-sized city in Oregon has to do now because of House Bill 2001. So it's a very common thing. The other thing is that currently we allow PUDs in the R1 zone. And the Dana Lane PUD that's near you is R1. And all of the lots are 2,000 square feet or less. So it's already something through a different mechanism than, that can already occur in the R1 zone. And there are some parts of this code, which even with duplexes, which is really not, not much of a stretch in, in R1, that are such good design standards in terms of the way things interact with the street and the rest of the neighborhood, that I think that you're going to find that these fit right into R1 neighborhoods and aren't particularly disruptive. I did want to suggest you guys maybe look at, at floor area ratio instead of the maximum unit area ratio to decide how many units can be on a R2 or R3 lot. I think there are just going to be some situations where you've got a strangely sized lot where if you used FAR instead of the maximum unit area ratio, you could get an extra unit. Let me see what else I had. And I continue to agree that the, the market is good at deciding how much housing is needed, that builders, if they think that it's going to be important to sell their projects, that parking is included, they'll do that. And so I would encourage you to remove parking, a parking minimum. And I think that's all I've got.
All right. Thanks, Heather. Anybody else?
Could I ask Heather if she has any comments on the open space percent right now? 30, the pictures we saw?
Um, you know, I did ask the Home Builders Association what, what they thought about it because I don't really have a clear conception myself of what a reasonable coverage is. And they thought 25% was a better percentage to achieve what the city is hoping to achieve, which I think really is about incentivizing more smaller units that are going to be priced more cheaply. And also, I hope you guys all got the thing that I sent earlier today about, about fourplexes. Because I've heard again and again that those are really good and important unit type to include in this code.
Right. Yeah, we got that. I believe everyone got that.
Awesome. Cool.
Okay, anybody else want to provide a comment? Going once, going twice. All right.
Be the first meeting that Linda ever went to and didn't comment. Is there?
Yeah, maybe she can't find the raised hand button.
May I ask a question about one of the comment letters we got? Because I wasn't able to open it from Nancy Roach. What was the synopsis?
Was, was this something that was sent today or with your packet?
I.
I think it came fairly recently.
I had asked to get the city council comments and Nancy had sent comments in that. I don't know. I remember reading that, but I don't, I'm not sure if that's the one you're talking about.
Nancy Roach comments came on Friday.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I, the only thing I have was, was sent before that. I don't, I don't have anything. Oh, Linda did raise her hand too, by the way.
Okay. We could promote Linda. Speak, talking. Okay, Linda, if you can come off mute, you can make your comment.
Um, Mark, are you?
We hear.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, your sound might be cutting in and out. I'm not sure the cell phone or the coverage is the best, but go ahead.
Let me turn it up.
Okay, no, you're good. That's good.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm, I'm very unhappy with this, this whole process. So, but I'm late to the, I'm late to the gate. So I realize that. First of all, we're far away from a 25,000 person population here in the river, which is when this House Bill 2001 becomes effective. I realize in, at 10,000 population, we are required to allow duplexes in all zones. I, I just feel like, I feel like this is really beyond even planning commission goes to city council. It is an enormous policy change. And I, I mean, I know Heather knows that for sure. I worked with her for years. And I'm sure most of you also realize that. It is a huge, huge policy change. And I almost wonder, you know, it's COVID time, we can't meet anymore and, you know, chat, chat. I almost wonder if there's some way that we could get much more input from our community on it before we go ahead with this. I am very concerned that it's just too much. I mean, going down from, going up to a 30% coverage for landscaping, no parking, all sorts of things. I, I mean, I totally understand the need for cheaper housing, but I'm just really concerned that this is way too much. It's an overstretch. And I don't, you know, I don't want to, you know, just pour water on it, but I'm really concerned about parking. I just went up on my way back from my walk this afternoon. I went up on 29th and 30th to see the Mike Cutler duplexes and my kids' duplexes that have been put up there and how that's affected parking. And basically, there were 18 cars parking on the street. There are also cars parking in the driveways. We can ideally think, yes, everybody's going to give up their car. But in truth, I mean, I live with 34 units here and most of the people here have more than one car and it is a problem. And we don't, they don't have parking within their area. And, and I want to correct Heather on one thing. Most, like my unit has 2,600 square feet. I'm a 2,600 square foot area of land. I don't have a garage. I'm the only place, I'm the only house that doesn't have a garage here in Dana Lane. But the parking situation here is always, has been a problem. It is a problem. People are parking on streets where they're not supposed to be. But we haven't enforced it. The HOA has not had to enforce, has not enforced it very well. And so there's overflow to 30th, but I could really see it up at the end of the street on 29th and 30th and even worse than here. And so, but the most important thing for me is, I think one of the things that's really important is, we keep saying how we're concerned about climate change. You know, the, the city council has said, yes, they want to do things about climate change. And I'm so concerned with the coverage on the lots in this plan to have, you know, so little soil actually getting wet because of roofs and garage and, and parking spaces and garages, but I also am concerned. Because when I read this zone, I, it looks to me that you are supposed to park your car in a garage, not on the area in front of it. And so I, but maybe I'm reading it wrong. Dustin, you may be able to fill me on that. But I, I really feel that this zone is going too far. I may be, you know, on a minority and, but I really feel it would be a good idea to get it out to more people. to get it out to more people, like maybe wait half a year when we can have like a town hall meeting and show people what is in the plans and maybe everybody will embrace it. I don't know, but I really feel that it is too far. And I, and I also, Dustin, there's no real definition of middle housing. I think maybe there needs to be admission of that. And I'm also concerned about CCNRs. I've, I've been, I'm in the HOA now. I'm on the board of it. And they basically don't have a lot of, at least mine does not, have a lot of force in terms of how, what we can demand from the people that are owners here. Um, I just see all sorts of, you know, issues. But I, and I do think we need to have parking because everybody loves their cars. And here in this 34 units here, many people don't just have two cars. They have three. They have their Sprinter vans or whatever they carry or, or pickup. You know, as people love their cars. And I wish it wasn't so, Megan, but it is true. And so anyway, I am very concerned about this. And also that I think we're, I mean, it's great to be ahead of the demand or ahead of, you know, the program. But I don't know that we can afford in many ways from climate to the cost of infrastructure to have such density. I really, I'm really not sure about that. And if somebody wants to live in a dense environment, there are cities that people are moving out of where they can live very densely. And I, I, I feel that way. I feel that way in a very emotional way. Anyway, those are some of my comments and I'm concerned about the cost of this for the town to have this density, the infrastructure cost. And I certainly don't see lowering SDCs to incentivize any of it. If anything, the, I mean, then the, the SDCs need to be the same because they're going to be enormous cost to carry a population in a way that this zone allows. Okay, that's enough for tonight. I'm sorry I went on, but I, I'm just, I was just tearing my hair out over it today. And I just think about it. Think about what are you doing to this town? And the other thing is where does this middle housing come in? It's not clear. Is it going to, are there going to be certain zones for middle housing? Or it looks like it can go anywhere. And that's not clear to me. Okay, I will, I will get off my rack. I'm sorry, Mark, but I just, yeah, lots of comments.
Thanks, Linda Maddox. We also have a hand up from Nancy Roach. Nancy, you, yep, I can hear you.
You can hear me now. Okay. I'm sorry, Greg and I are, my husband Greg Crafts and I are watching this on the TV and I couldn't figure out how to unmute it, how to talk on the TV. So first of all, I did not submit comment. I worked with Greg on his comment. I did submit comment to the last planning commission meeting and the city council meeting. I also think, I really applaud what y'all are looking at because I drive up Fourth Street all, almost every day when I go to the store, something like that. And I see developments on Fourth Street that are basically a garage and a wall facing the street, 10 feet from the street that are allowed and permitted in our existing code. And the building is going to happen, no matter, if we change the code, if we don't change the code, the building is going to happen. It's happening already. And I think we can all see examples around the city of places that we would like to have tweaked or done very drastically differently. So I think moving forward with this is important. And I also think it's important to remember that middle housing is maybe not for people who have three cars. I have friends who have two cars. They work two jobs. They're basically barely able to hang on here and they can't afford to buy a house. They're the people I think of when I think of the middle housing. And they have a kid in school here. I, those, those are the people I hold in my heart when I, during the hours I've spent looking at this and getting feedback from other people. And I, I really appreciate also that Dustin obviously has listened to feedback to make these more reality based as opposed to theory based. And I have one, one last comment. I agreed that one bedroom apartments are great. If you build a one bedroom house, I'm not sure that's so useful, right? And that's what Greg's comments were about, the demand for a one bedroom house. And that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Nancy. Okay, so back to us then. I think that's it from the public. So how do we want to go through this? I jotted down a few topic areas that we want to cover. So certainly the parking discussion, the lot coverage discussion. There was a, there was a piece on the unit size that we'd like to talk to. And then there's a few others that are rattling around that I think maybe we could kind of do a quick up or down vote, whether we wanted to cover, cover them or not. But so I'm thinking about, there's the CCNR discussion, the fourplex discussion, front porch and STRs. Whether, do we want to kind of do a quick up, down vote on whether we want to cover those? What do people think? I'm, I'm of course saving time for the parking, the lot coverage and the unit size restrictions is the three main topic areas.
I think a lot of those are worthwhile discussion. I mean, we have, I think we could cover the CCNR one pretty quickly and I have some commentary on that.
Yeah. Okay, does, does that sound like a plan? We'll focus on those three. But if we want to rattle through the other ones, just to see if anyone has any comments. If you have any that I missed, you could add them. All right. So CCNRs, CCNRs, we'll start there. Bill?
Okay, I have been the, you know, so I, I come across cases where in my day to day job as real estate, as well as doing some development, where there are common, you know, Dustin raised the concern that in cases where there are common elements that have to be maintained, you got to figure out how they're going to get maintained. And the way that works in the real estate world is basically there's two approaches. You have in small units, small projects, you typically have a common, a common wall agreement or a common maintenance agreement or a shared driveway agreement or something like that. That's a document that outlines responsibilities for maintenance, how costs are going to be shared for maintenance, the frequency of maintenance. And in the event that, you know, someone really needs to go to it, there's some, there's some legal recourse in a document like that. And then however, there's a little bit of is relying upon, you know, good faith cooperation between the neighbors to affect some of those things. You get into cases where you have larger HOAs and I have formed one and been the president of one and is a lot of overhead to set up and do all the documents for HOA, operating agreement, bylaws, register with the state. It costs 5% thousand dollars per project. You have to have a reserve study for all the common elements. You basically have to typically accrue funds for replacement of common elements. You have to have, you, you know, you basically need to file taxes annually. You have to have a board of directors. I mean, and when you, I, it's just, it seems to me like it's an excessive amount of overhead for something that's of the size that we're talking. And so that's a spot where I think maybe, I appreciate the intention that's trying, the intent of what's trying to be accomplished, but I think maybe we should consider an alternative for the smaller project types. And the alternative would be that we could have some requirement that in lieu of an HOA, that at a minimum, there's some type of common maintenance agreement or a common wall agreement or some type of agreement to maintain the common elements is basically what we would say.
Do, do we have examples of where that's worked? So if there was a, a common element that needed repair or replacement?
Well, you know, basically any, anytime a townhouse gets sold, it's going to be, a townhouse is going to be in an HOA or it's going to have a common, a common element agreement. So it's like you got a townhouse and they're all painted the same color on the outside. You got a townhouse and there's a wall firewall separating the two interior, the two interior units where they have a common roof, for example. That common wall agreement basically, you know, specifies, you know, owner A and owner B, we're going to paint the thing every seven years and we're going to paint it this color. We're going to split the cost like that. And if we don't agree upon the color, then we're going to paint it the color it already was. For example, that's how those things are, that's very typical in the market. Same thing with the shared driveway, for example.
Yeah.
You got four cottages and they share driveway. That's a, that's an easier way to do it than have an HOA.
Any other comments?
Without, without exhausting all your time, I think you could probably have a language insert that says after HOA or some other acceptable common owners agreement that may provide that alternative without, again, without, it's not just HOA. It's HOA or something. And that would allow me when I, before I got to ordinance, to allow my attorney to look through it.
I like that.
The language may, might be or an agreement for maintenance of common elements.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's alternative. I mean, it's not just HOA or nothing. I think, you know, I think I would support that because.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. Anybody want to talk about the fourplex? I think makes sense to add it. Any issues or discussion?
I have a, I have a question on, going, going back to the definition, Dustin, of the cottage housing. Because I missed last meeting, but the meeting before we talked about it being, it could be attached or detached, but also that it was going to be one story or one and a half story. And I thought we had agreed or it was written down that we were going to look at it, the idea of adjustable sizes. So you could have anywhere from 800 to 1,500, but the average is going to be 1,100 or whatever it turned out to be, we're going to base it on an average. I don't know where any of that went, but it, but I feel like the cottage housing definition could work for a fourplex, depending on how it's written. And it wasn't clear in the definitions that we have here today. It didn't seem to be the same as what I remembered from, from two meetings ago.
It seems to me like the cottage definition was inherently detached, but I could be wrong. Dustin?
Well, and wasn't cottage just one, sort of one missing middle option? And yeah, as we've touched on this before, I don't really understand why we wouldn't have fourplexes in here. I guess my only question would be, how does that affect that our definition of multifamily housing? Does that, does that go to five and higher or can we have that overlap in our code?
There, sorry, there, there can be overlap. You would just need to really, you know, invest. So, and that's why it shows up in the definition of what distinguishes this. So in the rest of the code, it requires multifamily. It doesn't say a size. And it says four or more units. You, you could establish a use saying here, here's your middle, here's your quadplex, your missing middle quadplex. And it would be four or, or less units or four units attached in a single or configuration or a attached or detached configuration. But then what distinguishes them is these have a size restriction. So if you followed, if you follow the rationale of the code, you know, a multifamily could be four units attached and they're all 2,000 square feet each. This has the headroom of saying this, this is how you get four units in one building. They're all, you know, they're, they're subject to the restrictions. They're oriented towards the street. They have a landscape. They have this, this reduced parking space allowance. You know, they, they follow this code. So you can have two of them. It just becomes, the more units you attach to the building, to me, the larger it, it becomes inherently. And the design becomes more important. I mean, that's, that's just in my recommendation and opinion, the larger the building, the more important the design. So.
One question, Dustin. So under the code as drafted, how, would, is there a possibility for someone to do two duplexes on an R3 lot? I'm going back to, you know, the Joel project on 7th to, I mean, I'm imagining two of those things side by side.
Yeah, on an R3 lot, if you had that, that unit, they would have to be 800 square feet.
But what, what would that fall under if someone wanted to do something like that?
Oh, that would be two, two, two unit. So that's a two unit configuration. So two.
So, so specifically in the code as contemplated, we allow two unit configurations. So now what we're really talking about is a single building with four units in it. Okay. So, so the two, three and the two and three unit are inherently attached.
Or they could be detached. They could be detached as well. So you could do a two unit attached with a, they're, they're attached or detached. They're both options.
And is that true in the cottage housing as well?
The cottage initially was drafted, so the cottage is kind of, was drafted as initially as detached. And then we had recommendations to allow it to be attached as well. But a lot of that changed when it became, when we lost some of the common space. So the cottage housing initially had the common cluster around the common open space. And so it started losing some of its, how it was differentiated because there was no open space. There was no private space. There was no common space. There was no common element, you know? So it kind of lost some of its unique aspects.
One question, Dustin. What, what are your thoughts if we said something radical like the middle housing could either be one unit, two unit, three unit or four unit buildings? So you're limiting, so you can't have a five flex or a 10 flex or something like that, but we just get rid of the cottage concept and a cottage project is, you know, could be eight one unit buildings in of middle housing.
Yeah, I think.
What the differentiator is there?
This, this where the ceiling came into play. So in R1, they initially were, there's, they were initially detached. If you were going to do a duplex, two units on one lot, that could be eventually divided. It was going to be two unit, not three. So that changed that. But that's kind of morphed in time. The one unit becomes tricky because at some point you, I think the idea and the way this is written is you're going to require these things as planned developments with a minimum number of units. So it's not really fit to the single unit. It's fit to, here's two laid out. Here's three laid out. Really with certain ceiling.
I guess that's, I'm, I'm trying to, I was, I was expecting that you would, the way, the way our code is organized around, or used to be organized around townhouses was it was kind of like hierarchical. You had a townhouse building, which had a particular number of units in that building. And then above that, your townhouse project could have a certain number of townhouse buildings in it. So I'm envisioning that this middle housing could work something like that where you've got middle housing units and we've got, they could either be one, two, three or four you, attached units. And then there's a middle housing project that has, you know, you could have two, two unit buildings in it or you could have a freestanding cottage in a two unit building, a three unit building or something like that. I'm just trying to figure out, work, put my head around it. What's the difference? What is the cottage housing, you know, do it, doing here at all, I guess?
Yeah, it was just anything over four. I mean, there was, you know, the idea of you had two unit configurations, three, and there was the cottage that, that was fitting when it, when it was covering anything for four or more. So it allows, but, but again, when the common and open space went away, the cottage, it kind of lost its, its status because all the open space is gone. I mean, there's nothing to comment around unless somebody decides to do it. Unless somebody, you know, is that, that's in their design. So that, you know, in the, in its initial configuration, it had 50% of the units will face the cottage and the cluster. And now that, that's all. And now that, that's all irrelevant. So it's now just back to, here's how you do two units. Here's a two unit configuration or a three unit. So you could have two, three, or four and just rely on, how would you say? Rely on the, the, the area requirements to find that and cap it at four. You have that option. I would clearly say where are you going to allow for, like differentiate between, are you going to allow four in R one? Or, you know, that, that would be, that would be an important consideration.
Okay. And you can do four detached. So that does cover, you could do some combination of looking at how many units are in the, based on the square footage, square footage max.
Right. You can organize them as attached or detached, or you could limit that to say no more than four attached units per building, two or three. And you could break it down that way and just say no more, no more than four in a single building and cover, and cover much of it.
Right. I, by the way, think that would be useful.
The, the one component that I think is, and I think Heather highlighted this, but, you know, driving all over Portland, historically, you go into some of these old neighborhoods where they have twenty-five hundred square foot, and we have them around town, you know, or, you know, four square craftsman houses. And you go in and there's two units on the downstairs. You go upstairs, there's two units upstairs. And they fit in to those existing neighborhoods really well. So I'm a proponent that we somehow figure out how to do four. That's my vote.
But four is attached? What if they were all detached, popped around the, the site?
I, I, I think, I think in any configuration, whether it's four little cottages or two duplexes or one big, one thing that looks like a single family with four units in it, I think that's a valuable configuration type. In particular zones, I don't know, you know, go back to your comment, Mark, is that something we should be sticking in our, our one zone? We can have that debate, but certainly in our two and our three, I think the fours make sense.
Yeah, I agree. I don't see any argument why we wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
So if, if there's consensus on that, that you would like four or, four or less in any configuration in R two and R three, I can work that into the code. Would you recommend staying with two or less in R one?
I would suggest that. Yep.
I don't know that I agree with that. I mean, as we said, when we look at some of these R one neighborhoods, some of these houses that exist there are quite large. And I mean, walking by on the sidewalk, how would you know if those are broken, broken up into a three unit or a four unit? I mean, it would look the same from the street. So I don't know that that's a distinction that we need to make for our one.
Right. What I call the clown house, I think that sold, what was that, like a five? I think that was like a five or six. Yeah, that thing could have been divided up into like four different units. So it was huge.
And it is in the R one zone.
Which one is this?
Corner of Seventh and Sherman formerly.
Seventeenth and Sherman?
Seventh. Right around this building.
Oh, the clown house.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, we have several large homes in Hood River like that. And just to say that.
Yeah, I think the, I guess the interesting thing for me is the, you know, I don't know that we talk about it very much in our code, but certainly some of the code that I've written talks about, you know, one of the purposes of zoning is to maintain, you know, some, some light and air and privacy in your backyard. And, and so if you bought a one, R one house, you expect to have a house pushed to the front and, and some backyard. And then if, if we change the requirements here and all of a sudden we have wall to wall housing, you know, sort of deep into the lot, you know, a lot of that goes away. You know, in a smaller R two neighborhood, some of the things I'm thinking about kind of up beyond in the area that Linda Maddox was just talking about, you know, there's not much site left to build in the backyard. There's some setbacks. But I'm thinking in R one neighborhoods, there's a, a deeper lot. And if you ended up with, you know, two houses going all the way to the back, what have we done in terms of take away that, that backyard? So, I mean, I sort of like the notion of, you know, what would, what could you tell from the front and from the street if it's one, one house or two? That doesn't concern me as much, but if it sort of goes back into the, deep into the lot, based on some of those diagrams that Dustin was showing, that's where I get a bit concerned.
Yeah, adding to the footprint, you're saying, rather than divying up an existing.
Yeah, I see in, in the example of what Commissioner Irving was just talking about, in a part of the neighborhood, you take a big house and you divide it into two or four, you know, doesn't sound too bad. But you don't go, you know, back into the, deep into the, the sort of the back of the lot where the trees are and where the grass is and where people have some privacy. So that's the bit that I'm concerned about.
Could I jump in and maybe, I have one concept that may make this largely relevant or irrelevant. And it goes back to the concept that has been proposed a couple of times, which is, should we be looking at this from a intensity of use floor area ratio versus the maximum unit area or whatever we're doing now? That, I mean, that would address some of what you're saying, Mark. And in R one, we expect to have this amount of use. And if there's a single big house there, that's fine. If there's a couple cottages there, that's fine. But that would, that, that would limit what happens. That would prevent R one from becoming R three.
I think, you know, at the end of the day, I think what concerns me a little bit is that, you know, what we want is more doors, as we've talked about, right? That's what we want and we want affordability, you know. But what I'm a bit worried about is the way that this is shaping up is what we could end up with is density. And, and sort of, you know, a lot of roofs, a lot of, a lot of building, a lot of density. But there's no guarantee of the affordability or more, yeah, more, more affordability or the small size that, you know, comes along with that. And so it feels to me like, you know, we're just sort of headed to this, this space where it will be about density and it won't be about affordability. And I like the idea. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Along is there a risk of losing existing housing stock in favor of the middle housing? Is there anything in the code about maintaining, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of the right words, but, you know, are people going to start tearing down houses left and right to do this?
Well, certainly that was one of the comments from the community, even the planning community in Portland, that that would be happening.
Sorry, I'm trying to find my mute.
Yep, no worries. No, that, I mean, that's a standing, I think that's a standing comment on House Bill two thousand and one, which is that all these little bungalows will be torn down and turned into quads. I don't know if that's happened, but I don't think we can control that. Dustin, can you control that? I don't think we can control that.
No. Until you start buying them, that, you know, that you will, this is a market, I mean, it's the market for that.
Yeah, the only mechanism I know is historic landmark denotation. And people are tearing down architecturally significant homes right now to build mansions. So I don't feel like that's something that we can have any control over.
Could we jump in, get people's opinion? I, I want to have, did everybody get the submission from Heather to City Council that Dustin forwarded that has a comment about how Portland tackled this with their infill car code in the far area formula where you get twenty-five thousand square feet for a single, three thousand square feet for a duplex, three five hundred square feet for three, four units, six thousand for four to six, where one or more units are affordable? Something like that, it specifically lit, would limit stuff getting removed to build big houses as well as incentivizes people to build more smaller things.
Yeah, I, I think I've been a proponent for the floor area ratio idea. I just, I know we've batted that around a couple of times, but I think what Heather showed was, was useful.
Right. Yeah, I definitely agree with that because it allows more flexibility, which by default means we're encouraging more middle housing.
How's everybody else? Yep, Tina?
I'm, I'm supportive of that. This is Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
Yeah, I am as well. This is Erica.
And Tina?
Tina, yes.
I think that's a yes. Okay, so Dustin, maybe take a look at the Portland FAR, or area ratio discussion?
Yeah, I guess in what direction would the FAR? So right now you have a FAR in place. We don't call it a FAR. You take your lot, you have a certain lot coverage percentage, like in R one, forty percent. That's essentially a point four to one ratio. You make that a two story, that's point eight to point one. That's a floor ratio. Three story, you have one point two to one. That, that's your FAR. And then I could go down through each of the zones. R two, point four, five to one at one floor, point nine oh to one at two floors, point three five, or one point three five to one, four floors. Our, same thing, point five five, R three, one point one to one, two story in R three, one point six five to one. Our, like, that's, that's, that's the breakdown for one, two, and three story and of FAR in the city of Hood River. We just don't call it FAR. We call it lot area coverage and we kept the, we kept the ceiling. So, I mean, that's the, that's the breakdown. I think some of this would try and, I mean, what I, when I'm looking at some of the pictures that you put up there, Dustin, and it has basically, you just showed that thirty percent open space and it showed that the little green strips are just going to be our setbacks. And then you imagine a box built out to, from setback to setback to maximum building height. That is an intense use. Right? You, I think everyone would agree. And if we took an approach where we said, you know, it, where the, the ma, the total usable square footage built on a lot is limited, instead of, that's going to, that's going to basically lead us to inherently probably more green space, potentially more units. Yeah, the same, the same thing with your code now. I mean, if you have a mid, essentially a dwelling unit size limit, you know, fifteen hundred with attached, eleven hundred without, and you have a per unit area calculation, you, you'll get there, you'll get there as well. So for example, you have a certain number of dwelling units permitted every square footage and you know what the size limit is. You, I can, I can give you the FAR right off the top of my head. I mean, I, you know, our, our one at one story is point four. Or, or, you know, it's point six at, at, at two stories, which is probably the biggest differentiating factor. R two, point nine, two story, same thing with middle housing code, forty-five hundred square feet on a five thousand square foot lot, point nine. R three, one point one for a two story, middle housing, fifteen hundred square foot dwelling units, cap ceiling, point nine. I mean, I, I could, I could FAR this because you know what the ceiling is for the, for your units. You know what the height is. You know what the ceiling and the dwelling size is. You can, it's just, we just don't talk about it as FAR. We talk about it as, here's how big your site is. Here's how many units you can have.
But is there the concept of looking at the Portland formula that is shown here that as you go larger, the units become smaller?
So that, that's where you have the differentiating between units between, excuse me, eight hundred, you know, eight hundred and less have that higher, that higher unit, twelve, thirty square feet. The larger units are one at fifteen hundred. And once you get above that, you're off to the base code. You know, you're, so you have kind of now three categories of, of, you have the standard unlimited size of your building. You follow the base code. Fifteen hundred to eight hundred, density bonus. Eight hundred and less, density bonus beyond that. It's, that's written in, in the code now. So it does differentiate that.
Okay. Well, maybe we can get there, but it might be.
Yeah.
Something we just need to see how it's written, the two versions of it.
Yeah, it was easier to understand when it was spelled out this way.
Yeah, the Portland one looked really.
Yeah, yeah. It was a little more intuitive and, yeah.
Can you just lay ours out in a manner that is organized like that then, Dustin? So we can clearly benchmark it against something or benchmark it, like take our existing code and put it against this. And like, you've got a bunch of tables in there that compare stuff. So seems like this would be a, could you do an option with this? Oh, let me, yeah, except you're now comparing, you don't have FAR. You don't have FAR now, so I, I can convert it to that. I just used your baseline code as before and after as the side by side. Right. That's what I'm saying, add a third column. So do you, I guess there's assumptions too of, do you take away for driveways? Do you require, do you allow a third floor? You, you know, there's, there's some, there's some tricks here. There's some, there, there's some loaded in assumptions that, that you have to kind of take into account. So I could do it. It's going to come loaded with assumptions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think this Portland formula is talking about putting the driveway in there. This is purely, what is this usable square foot of, of the building space?
Yeah, and I would be, I would be also caution FAR on a larger site. The idea that you may end up with a ten thousand square foot building with an eight thousand square foot or ten thousand square foot site with the eight thousand square foot building on it. That's, that's the same FAR as you see now. It's just they use one story that has zero impact or benefit to urban design. I mean, that's just, I, I, I can do it. Absolutely. I will question the, how the sanctity of FAR as a good planning tool, but I'll, I'll do it. I just, I won't recommend for it. I guess the question is, Portland has a lot more money and resources than we do. And they spent years working on an infill code and they came up with this as their preferred solution. And it seems like it overcomes a lot of hurdles here and there's some benefits to it. So I'm trying to figure out why we wouldn't consider it. Also, it's, I guess there's context and pushback too. They also have a, now a movement afoot that people are setting their historic developments aside to prevent this from happening. And, yeah, I would say that teardown issue is real. I mean, that's a real Portland issue that, that I would be concerned about, that this does become a vehicle to lose some of the character and form. And it, or does it become somebody's vehicle to declare their neighborhood historic and prevent this from happening there? Because that's where you've seen in Laurelhurst and other neighborhoods. So the pushback becomes, there, it's not like it's gone through with harmony. It's also why the residential infill code has changed a couple of times because there was concerns about it. So I would, I wouldn't raise that as the, the standard of success. They've done it. They've used it. I think there's, I, I would caution you. I would caution you on it. I can show you some bad FARs.
Yeah. Well, I think I was shocked at the little green strips around the site. And I think, again, it's like if, if there's little green strips around the site and we end up with lots of little door cottages with doors, then I think we've achieved a, you know, a goal. But if it's not, if we end up with wall to wall, twenty-eight feet tall buildings and we didn't get the, the small cottages or anything little, you know, a little more affordable, then I think it's just going to be a tough sell to the city that we made the right compromise.
It, I mean, it, it seems like this FAR prevents that, right?
It, I mean, it, it seems like this FAR prevents that, right? One door, you got a point five FAR. I don't, I mean, it seems like this does what we want it to do.
Okay, I think enough time's on it. Why don't we take a look at it Dustin and?
Yeah, I, I'll, I can break down the FAR before and after. I'll also bring you some bad FARs though, just so you know.
Yeah, but it's more about trying to say, you know, as it gets bigger, how do we get the units smaller, right? More doors.
Yeah.
Okay, some other topics that came up in your highlighted areas. Anybody have an opinion on the street connectivity question? Is that kind of a mute issue, as you mentioned, because of the lot, the native, natural lot sizes that we're talking about? I think including it would be, it would tie it into the rest of the thought of the city, right?
Yeah, it has to do with walkable and shorter grids.
Yeah.
Street grids, that's, that's the intent behind it. Again, as some of these infill, I would be really surprised if it was triggered because of the number of units that we're looking at. But I think it's left, or, and I don't think, I left it in there just in case we ended up with a scenario where we had a long stretch of units or some sort of land division where we were expecting some sort of street or pedestrian cut-through to.
Right.
A length. I mean.
I like that in there.
Yeah, I think, I don't think, do, do any of us disagree with?
I just had one question about something else on page seven there, right below that Dustin, where, where you talk about street frontage improvements. Why is there a clause in there that says unless waived by the city engineer, public sidewalks and street trees shall be installed? Is that something that's in our other code? Because I think public sidewalks are important.
If there is a scenario where it's infeasible or impossible, or if there was something where, say for example, a subsequent project was going to go through, like a district-wide project, say for example on, just for, for consideration, we were gonna do something, somebody is requesting this in the heights, and we knew right on the tail end, we could see a major streetscape and urban renewal project come through, probably wouldn't be something we would ask them to do, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollar street in front, knowing it on, it was gonna come on the, the heel.
Get ripped out.
New York project, just.
I just, I just wanna make sure we don't end up with more of these like, near, like up there by Twenty-Ninth where we have these little narrow streets where nothing functions. I just, I wanna make sure we're not building that kind of stuff into our code, these sub, you know, sub-appropriate infrastructure.
The, the intent is to provide at least a little flexibility where, where engineering is gonna say, not, not here, not, not appropriate. Not, not as an.
Okay.
Okay, so everyone's good with street connectivity?
Yep.
Next on the list was, our favorite, sorry, go ahead.
Building height.
Building height. Go ahead.
Would you like me to bring up the, some examples? You want, let me know if you want me to share it anytime, and I'll, I'll bring up pictures for you.
Okay, Bill, go ahead with.
My comment is, our building height standard in Hood River has been kind of broken for a while. I think we need to go back and fix it. I looked at a lot of the diagrams, and I see the merits of being able to go to twenty-eight feet. The residential building height in all of our residential neighborhoods used to be thirty-five until ten years ago. So we got a lot of existing housing stock that's thirty-five feet tall. I would, I would suggest that we don't have a different height definition and height standard for middle housing code. And we fall back on what we have for the city, and then we get around to fixing what we have at the city level to work for sloped lots and everything else.
Okay, interesting proposal. What thoughts from others? Keep with the twenty-eight feet?
Yeah, I like the twenty-eight feet in large part because the feedback from the building community that we heard from via Heather and Greg Craft, it's hard to build it without that. It's, it's hard to get two stories in twenty-five feet. So I, I would support twenty-eight feet.
Yeah, I support it as well. This is Erica.
Tina, Megan?
Same with me.
Yeah, I'm with you. The building community knows more about this, these kind of details than I do, and I think we're all sick of flat-roofed buildings, so.
All right, and that's a, that's a ditto for me, so move on.
Is that twenty-eight feet measured to the flat roof? Or I guess as a twenty-eight feet, like, this is, this is an important distinction, because Bill mentioned just reverting to the previous city rules, which are twenty-eight feet from grade, just does not distinguish between flat or pitched. So I just wanna make sure that we're, twenty-eight feet seems to be the consensus. It's twenty-eight feet measured how? I guess that's kind of digging into it.
I, I, I think I agree with what Bill was saying, was we need to have the conversation we've been waiting to have around building heights. I think my thought would be is that it's the same as the rest of the city.
As soon as you get this off of our plate, let's do that. And then we won't have to worry about someone building something in the interim, because we'll have fixed it by the time they get to it.
And for Erica, I don't know, and for Amy, listening to the recording, now there's a, there's a, a piece of code that we've been waiting to get to for building heights as part of the overall municipal code updates we wanted to do. Okay, so that's that one. I think we skipped past the parking thing, you know. Want to do, I know we've spent some time on this, but do we want to do a quick round robin on zero, zero spaces versus point five versus point seven five versus one? Go around the horn with that topic?
This is Erica. I would be in favor of, I was thinking the point seven five or the point five, something that does require some parking, kind of in the middle between zero and one, but allows the developers some flexibility. Because I, I agree, especially when you get to the four units, you know, that we really shouldn't have to have parking for each unit.
Okay. I think Megan and Tina, we know you're, you're at zero.
Yeah, I'm definitely at zero for an equity climate change and congestion issue. I'm, we have different ways of getting to it, Linda and I, but we both want less cars on our street.
Yeah, and I'll just, I, I won't, I won't go through my whole stump speech again, but I'll just reiterate that remember, this is just one new type of code, and we're trying to get something that we haven't gotten before. So we're not talking about changing parking requirements for the city. We're just talking about doing it for this code. And so I think we need to get out in front of it a little bit more than we've done in the past.
So I, I know I've been the advocate in the past of really not wanting to reduce parking at all with my original preference, because I, I really don't like all the on-street parking that's already happening, and this is bound to encourage so much more of it. But despite that, I agree with Tina, and you know, this is one small piece of the code. So, but going to zero sounds extreme to me. I, I would, I would go with Erica on either point five or point seven five would be my preference, because I still think that is a huge adjustment from what we currently have.
Although keep in mind, we're not saying that it has to be zero. We're just giving developers that prerogative to say, maybe they'd rather put in, you know, a different configuration of a cottage or a building if they didn't feel that they had this requirement. You know, you look at all the ways that driveways have to be configured and the turning radius and stuff. I mean, it just eats up so much of the land so quickly. I guess that's my concern. So we gave builders the maximum flexibility. Figure it out.
I, I'll comment. I came to this meeting thinking one seemed reasonable because it was fifty percent improvement on what we have now, but it's like it was gonna be drastic. I don't think doing away with it all together makes sense for me, but I could get somewhere less than one to point five or point seven five too. I mean, I'm flexible in this, but I lean towards wanting to have something versus absolutely zero. And I don't know why I say that.
I think.
And then I guess the question would be, is if we were talking about, you know, do you round up or do you, do you round down? You know, if you've got two units and a point seven five, what do you, what do you gotta build? One point five parking spaces or two?
Yeah. Two, it rounds up.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess my issue is just the Dana Lane example, right, that Linda Maddox brings up. I mean, I just feel like, you know, I ride by that every day on my bicycle. There's no bike lane at that point in the street, city. And, you know, there's a lot of cars spilling out from that little development. I mean, just an enorm- enormous amount of cars. And I'd love to say that five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, I'm gonna drive by Dana Lane, and it will be zero cars. I would love to see that. I'll take that bet. And I just feel like if, if it gets, you know, a lot more density in town, you know, all of our streets will be overflowing that way. That's my concern, right? So I, I wish for the best, and if we can get to zero cars, drive us his cars, pick us up, take us to the store, that sounds great, but.
So it seems like.
I'm concerned.
It seems like this, this is an area where we don't have consensus, and we should maybe show our lack of consensus to council, right? We've got a couple people saying zero. Mark, are you at one?
Yep, let's go with one, just so.
You're at one. I could, you've got a couple people in the middle. So I think the communication to council as a recommendation is, we are split, and these are the reasons.
I think, I, I think if we had, you know, when we use examples like Sacramento and Berkeley, notwithstanding Hudson, New York, I mean, we're talking about cities with a much greater infrastructure of being able to get to the store and, and move around with public transportation. So that's where I get, you know, a bit hesitant, this, Hood River is this outdoor town where people are going places up to mountains and things, and, you know, just the idea that, anyway, so that's where I get a bit concerned. And it's not, it's not for the long-term view. It's just the short-term view.
I, I think you do have, not Bill or anyone, I think you do have six people or five that would do point seven five. And Amy represented in email that she would be agreeable to point seven five as well, just out of.
Okay, so we picked the average. We've hit an average.
Well, I like the idea of what Bill said is representing the split to show that there, there is wide opinion. And I also want to rebut a couple of Mark's comments. Mark, you haven't lived until you've seen somebody carrying a longboard by a cargo bike.
Oh, I've seen it. I've been to Santa Cruz, don't worry.
Yeah, yeah. Or, yeah, I've seen some crazy stuff on bikes. It's possible. It's just you need the constraints to make that happen. And that brings me to my, like, second rebuttal is, if we want to see no cars, less cars on our streets, we are the people that make that happen. That it's, we are the policymakers. It, the entire market changes because of things that we decide. And so we can't wring our hands like this and say, but we can't take away parking because people have cars. Well, people have cars because the market hasn't allowed, let, the market hasn't been allowed to provide housing for people that don't have cars. So I would really like to show that, that split to, to city council. And we do have transit, and it's getting better every day.
Yep.
I mean, I, the, to rebut that a little bit, Megan, I mean, I'm, you know, if you live in a place like New York City, there's a significant economic cost to having a vehicle. Here, basically, what's gonna happen is if we eliminate it onsite, it's going to go on-street. We don't have any parking limits in any of these residential zones. We don't have parking enforcement in these residential zones. We don't, I mean, it's just, there's, it's not like someone's gonna come along, you're just gonna have thirty tickets stuck to your windshield, and then you decide to get rid of your car. They're just gonna park it on the street is my, that's the place where I think there's a gap in your arguing, argument. I don't know, I, I guess I, maybe you could comment on that.
Yeah, but it's up to us to start the discussion. We need to, we need to start talking about these issues and how, and what are the unintended consequences and how we can design policy around them. Because if we don't start, then we're just never gonna address it.
And I guess I'll piggyback on that, because going back to, again, the goal of this particular zoning code is to come up with a way to make housing a little more affordable. And as we walk through here, half the discussions I see are like, oh, but we gotta fit in driveways. Oh, we gotta fit in turning radiuses for the driveways. Oh, we gotta fit in curb cuts for the driveways. It's all this like driveway, driveway, parking, parking. And maybe people don't want that, you know, not everybody does need that. And I just think that, as Megan says, I mean, it is our job. We are the planning commissioner. I mean, we should be planning for, you know, alternative choices for people. And we just, as a city, we have not given people those choices yet. And I just feel that this is our opportunity to try it. And again, it's not saying that they can't do parking. We're just not saying you're required to provide parking. So I think at least we've come to the agreement that we're less than one. And I think that's a start.
Anything else on the list that people wanted to cover that we hadn't covered so far? Just scanning it, the only other thing was the porch.
STRs was one.
STR and porches?
And unit, unit size, that's a significant one as well.
And that wasn't built into the FARs?
Well, I guess I, I could build it in FAR, but there's a ceiling on it. If you, if you put an FAR on a, is it, again, it's a way of getting at the FAR. Like, there's, we have a built-in cap now. Do you just wanna go to FAR and take the lens off or take the unit size off?
What do people think about adding, so it was item I on page eleven, maximum square foot per dwelling unit without an attached garage, twelve hundred square feet. Units with an attached garage, maximum of fifteen hundred, including the garage. And the reason this showed up, right Dustin, is that as we got rid of the lot coverage and went to open space, maximum or minimum percentages, the feeling was it could grow, these units could grow out of scale. So we wanted to put something back in there to, to balance that. Change in the lot coverage discussion so that no one unit is greater than fifteen hundred square feet.
Correct. As the, as the, as the ceiling went up on height and the restrictions went down on the amount of area to be, that could be built upon, and that went up, the potential for grossly out-of-scale, larger units or consolidation of units into, into larger, larger units went up. So that's where, that's where the unit size came from, is to put a ceiling on the, these, what is ideally a, a unit that is targeted towards a smaller, a smaller unit.
Yep.
A relatively more attainable unit.
Well, I agree with the idea of maximum unit size. I, this still seems large to me, but I think we had that discussion last week. So I, I definitely support having a maximum floor area.
Any, does anybody know what's the average on Dana Lane? Those have a garage, most of them, except for Portland the Maddocks. But Bill, do you happen to know what those tend to be?
That was the picture that Greg sent. I mean,
No, that was something different, I think.
Those units are, are twelve to maybe eleven to fourteen hundred. They're basically two, there's occasional three bedrooms in there. They're basically two, there's occasional three bedrooms in there. And then Greg's comment, I think, was that I thought he said that he sent a picture of something that was on Union or somewhere like that with a little two-bedroom with a garage. And he said, for some reason it didn't, that wouldn't have fit under our code. And I guess if I need to go back and look, but are we adding calculating garage in that code language?
Yeah, that was, that's the 1,500 includes a single, single garage.
So that, so.
Was not.
Have you modified this since Greg sent his comment with the picture or did that come today?
Uh, I think the 1,200 came in last time. I, I'm having a hard time tracking when those comments came through. Twelve, so it's twelve, actually it's in the code. It's 1,200 without an attached garage and 1,500 with an attached garage. And I think it's that, that does have some, uh, some reflection. I think he said 1260 in his comments. If it was a 1,500 square foot, you take out the garage, it was 260 square feet. So I think I just rounded to 12 and then 15. That also reflects some of the comments that our, uh, architectural consultants mentioned. It's like all the prototypes that we worked on wouldn't have been broken with a 1,200 square foot, uh, size increase. And that's when we were, when we were looking at the original square footage and the amount of uh, buildable area we were going to cap. So if, if we increase that amount based on those prototypes, we weren't going to, we weren't going to break the code.
At 1,200 or 1,500?
Uh, 1,200 with, uh, without a garage and.
Oh, without the garage and 1,500 with, okay, yeah. I, I would agree with that. I know the picture that Greg sent was 1,200 with an attached garage. And he said there's 850 feet of living space with two bedrooms. Okay, I, I would cap it at 1,500 with, with an attached garage.
Craig just sent me a text message, says his comments were related to something where we had a limit of 900 square feet. And he said that, that was.
That was the cottage housing, yeah.
But, but that's.
Running where the cottage housing definition had 900 square feet.
But that's, that's right.
That was a 900 square foot footprint, uh, not size.
Okay. And so in, is that, what's, is that still in our code set and what section is that in? That definition, the 900 limit?
That's in definitions.
Okay.
I underlined it. It's a, we're, it's underlined, it says 900 square foot footprint.
Got it. Okay, so. So yes, so you can't do a s- so you can't do a single story with the garage then? Cause we, you could do a 1,200 square foot unit or 1,500 square foot if it has a garage. But we're requiring then that it be two-story by this other, by this other definition or limitation.
That goes back.
Only for the cottage cluster.
What was for the, that was when cottage was more relevant.
Does, does it, could you check Dustin to see if it makes any sense for us to just strike cottage definition and fall back on the balance of the code set?
It's increasingly looking that way. Every meeting it becomes less relevant. With probably, and I guess if that is, that'll help me do revisions if you have a four units or less conversation. If that, if that's, if I have consensus there, I'll modify some of those configuration discussions. Ba- based on if that is the, that's your R2 and R3 has four or less. And then I guess we, we kind of skip the R1. Would that be two or less? I think that was my mention. Or is it four or less regardless of of the zone?
Well, that's a big question, actually.
It's all done, I mean, I think there was a consensus on R2, R3. It's, it's all about R1. How do you want, R1?
I, I mean, I think I'm, you know, Linda managed, I, I think I'm just worried about what a change that is without a lot of, there's, uh, a lot of input from the public. That's going to be a fairly sizable change to a lot of people that, uh, don't know anything about that going on.
This seems like maybe we should just take a round and take a poll. Mark, you, you would prefer to have it as a limit of two? Anyone else?
I, I would, I would rather have it a limit of two as well. It just seems like a compatibility issue that could get, um, very challenging.
Tina?
Oof, I'm kind of, uh, I can see both sides of this, but I guess I also would rather err on the side of not going from zero to 60 all at once. So yeah, I'd be okay with limiting R1.
I would be in favor of two with the exception of existing houses.
Oh, good point.
Could you clarify what you meant by that, Megan?
Uh, taking the clown house and dividing it into four units.
Got it.
Yeah, could we word it somehow where we talk about if you're not altering the footprint? It could be more units.
Exactly.
Word is, we should talk about it attached or detached.
Right, that was my other exception is if they're all detached, um, then um, I support that.
Support, right? How, how does that work if they're all detached?
Meaning individual houses instead of one block?
Like putting a cottage, so four, four cottage clusters on an R1?
Yes.
As long as they're small?
Yes. Uh, something I read about in the, um, the Sacramento vote is that R1 lots, uh, were not able to to, I'm going to say this wrong, they weren't able to build more square footage than what was existing prior.
Okay, I think we've heard from Sue, Tina, Mark, Megan? Erica?
Yeah, I'm on favor of limiting the R1.
Okay, Bill?
I, I think conceptually I'm at limiting R1. The problem is our map. And I think, I think we're talking, you know, the the, the House of Megan's talking about is basically adjacent to our commercial zone.
Yeah.
And it's zoned R1. I mean, we basically have a map problem there. So I think, when I think about it that way, I'm okay with limiting R1 and suggesting we should fix things like that.
Right.
So when I, I come back, uh, come with a limit, limit on R1 and then consider the R2 and R3. Just amend the definitions on maximum number of units that can be connected.
Right, and it's tied to the square footage per the chart that you already showed, right? Of in R2, it's a certain square footage, right? We, we keep that chart in there, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have to probably reconcile some things with FAR because it, it will probably throw off some, it'll throw that off.
What about adding, oh, sorry. What about adding?
Sorry.
One, two, three. What about adding that idea of more units if you're not alter, if it is attached and you're not altering in an existing home? If you're retrofitting an existing large home?
In your code, there's a provision that's included that, that's in that. And it is.
Oh, oh.
It is on age 16. Uh, item number three.
So what would, if, if you had a house that was, um, I'm just throwing out crazy example, like a 4,000 square foot house? How many units could you get out of that?
The way it's written now is three max.
Three.
If you had a 3,000 square foot house, you could get three, 2,003.
What if we up that to four?
Yeah, I think four is, there's some.
We have a lot of giant houses in this town.
That's just the way it was written before because I was capping, capping building, building size across the board at three.
Yeah. I'd be in favor of switching that to four. And then that would kind of cover that concept of, you know, some of these big old homes.
Exactly. And then I would, and then I would be fine with two on R1s.
Is there consensus on that?
I think we, yep.
Or so it's R, it's R1, uh, or single home division? Is that regardless of zone? Or I just want to be real clear when I write this again.
Yes, regardless of zone.
So Seaver Crop House now is eligible for a, for, for, for a division, just as just for the sake of for to bring this down, bring this down to, uh, kind of.
I, I don't think that's even feasible to put four kitchens in a Seaver Crop home, but if somebody is creative.
There's, we have creative people.
I mean, I could see studio, you know, studio apartments in some of these homes that are now just, you know, giant McMansions. I mean, that's what's happening in older neighborhoods, right? You look at some of these classic complexes, they were once single-family homes and in the 40s or something, they were converted, so.
Right, but Dustin's point is not these classic old large homes, but the the much smaller.
Right, but.
Home from the 60s. Do we want that to be able to be divided into four units? I, I do struggle with that, that sounds.
I think we have to let the market be creative right now.
Yeah.
And they're not altering the scale or the character of the neighborhood. They're just adding diversity.
So if somebody had a, say a 50s ranch and they wanted to convert it to, you know, upper and lower, three units? I don't see why we shouldn't allow it. It's not going to change the look from the street essentially. It's just, again, yeah, it's allowing more flexibility.
Uh, any sidebars on, do they have to comply with anything? What's the compliance that they, what we end up as far as the density ratios, breakdowns or parking? And will we, there's the issue of will you allow them to park all in the front yard?
Are we talking about this, still this number three?
Yeah.
On page, page two?
I just, I, yeah. I'm just looking at, if, if there's going to be a conversion, what do we do with parking? If you're going to require it or you do, do you limit it?
Well, what do you have written here for three? As long as a dwelling can comply with building fire code and parking requirements. So I would leave that as is.
Well, so I think is, are the parking requirements, they're no longer two parking requirements for the house that had two parking requirements before. But it's going to change to point seven, five for a four dwelling unit. Is that what you mean, Tina?
Well, I'm just reading how it's already worded. I said, I don't know that we would need to change it again. Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, taking an existing home.
Requirements would now be overtaken by the middle, well, actually, that's weird, right? You're taking an existing big ranch house that could be 4,000 square feet and you're converting it into missing middle, three or four units, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're essentially carving up.
As long as, as long as the units are less than 15 or 1,200 square foot each, then you have qualified in the missing middle, middle rule, rule set.
And you would, you have three parking spaces provided.
Could I ask, so the, we've had some comment and I think that was from Greg and I kind of said it in my notes. I mean, it does seem that some of the diagrams where we have, you know, taken the cars and driven them at some great expense to green space around the back of the units to get them out of the front setback. It seems extraordinary. And we had some comment here that you, that parking was not permitted in any of those spaces. However, in our current code set, I think up to 50% of the parking can be met within the front yard setback. Is that right, Dustin?
That's correct.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't just maintain that position. I'll throw it out there as a devil's advocate. Why don't we just leave it the way it is? 50% of the parking can be in the front yard setback. That in, in this case where we have an existing conversion, the rules apply.
But you're in.
I struggle this one too, because I, I understand the concept of not having the front yard full of cars. But on the other hand, you end up with a heck of a lot more driveway. So I don't know. I guess I also think it's kind of a funny dichotomy where everybody wants their cars, but then we don't want to look at them. Either we love our cars or we don't love our cars. I can't, I can't quite figure out what the mentality is on them. Um, I, I personally don't have a car, problem of cars parked in the street or in a driveway. I think that's perfectly good use of pavement. So I, yeah, I don't really understand that, putting them in the back idea. So I'm with you, Bill. I'll, I'll be devil's advocate with you.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too. I just, I think that converting housing, like there's some, there's some big houses that are for sale right now that would be great to be able to convert over to four units.
Other thoughts, input?
I don't understand where that ended up. Did we say that we want to leave the parking at point seven, five per unit for whatever number of units?
Yeah, I think the.
Existing dwelling turned into.
That, that, that applies. That's a new missing middle formula for parking. But the question is just, do we, a lot of this is saying we want the house pushed towards the street and the parking at the back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is the question.
Yeah.
I think I took it as the conversion would allow 50% of the required parking to be in the front yard as the current code allows.
That sounds good. So is that saying that even though it's converted to a missing middle, there's a special grandfathering in of the front front driveway parking situation?
That's just what I heard, that's just what I heard come out of the discussion.
Yeah, I think I heard that too.
That would be a special exception.
But I think Bill was saying he wanted to extend that to all of the missing middle housing. And Tina was too, so that we don't need to.
Bigger question, it's.
Pave over all the way to the back in all of these missing middle housing where they're going to have some parking.
Like as Greg had pointed out in his letter, I mean, the Katie's Lane Development, you know, a lot of those homes there have that, that lovely little creek running through the back and they wouldn't have been able to do that development if they had had to put all the parking in the back. And, you know, I have friends that live in that development and yeah, the cars are in the front when you drive in there or walk in there or whatever. But then, you know, a lot of people have nice little patios or whatever in the back and it, it works not really nicely. So we're, we're saying that you can't do that anymore. And I'm not sure that's a wise choice. I understand the concept of the community, you know, the pretty front yards, but on the other hand, I'm, I'm just not sure it's practical.
What, what about, what about if, so the, the instead of saying all or none, we can go to our existing code, which says, again, 50% of it can be in it. That's, if you can imagine, if you've got some street frontage or this happening and only 50% of it is allowed, you're still going to have a sign, in my mind, a significant amount of this streetscape that is not cars parked.
I think, yeah, wasn't the other issue we were trying to solve is just not having, um, all this curb cut? And so when you get to have two, three, four units, you would end up with a lot of curb cut for all of that direct access as opposed to taking it to the back. I thought that's the problem we were trying to solve.
See, if we eliminate the parking, the developers have to solve this problem.
Right. And, and one, one thing in favor of doing front is it is way less infrastructure to install and whether State of Oregon or we surpass the 10,000 population or State of Oregon votes to eliminate parking or other market forces like gas prices or whatever comes down, this allows homeowners to really easily do the opposite of pave over paradise, put, put, tear up their driveways.
Pretty soon we'll just have landing pads on our roofs.
Jetpacks on our back.
Okay.
What, one last topic, STRs?
No STRs.
Oh, sorry. Is there consensus you want to go back to 50% in the front? Across the board on all these?
I don't know that we have consensus on that, no, I'm not sure.
I, I felt like there was more consensus on the conversion than there was discussion on this. Am I changing, am I changing anything?
I, I think, you know, I guess, I don't necessarily, I'm not a great fan of driving, making a requirement that requires, you know, a lot more of this coverage of the green space. I think my issue is, when I think of missing middle and certainly the cottage housing that we looked at before it was eliminated, you know, there's this idea that this is the type and scale of, of development, the product that, you know, does bring it to the street and that you end up with neighborhoods that are more connected to the people around it. So when we started this conversation, it just felt right that, you know, that was the sort of smaller unit and the cars were hidden around the back and we would pull people out towards the street, had the common spaces and the walkways. So if we're moving towards, you know, sort of your duplex, triplex, quadplex model, model, I think in my mind it works better for duplexes, but when you get a quad and, then I have some concerns about parking in the front. I could imagine how that could look.
50%.
50%.
Yeah, I'm supportive of 50% across the board.
So that's 50% of the .75 that would be required.
Could be in the setback, the rest of it has to be out of the setback.
Yeah.
So for, so for three, four units, you're going to end up with three spaces.
Three spaces.
One and a half in the setback. So 30 feet of your front yard is now driveway.
Or what about if we round down?
So now you got one driveway car in the front and hopefully, and then you take out one on-street parking space and now you have no more parking. And you got a bunch of sidewalk in the front yard. I, you, you guys can do the math. There's a real reason why I crafted it that way. So, and 30% of your setback and landscape space is now parking lot. We went down this with Wasco. You take it, we can do a field trip one day.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, and I, I think the .75 parking requirement is not really going to decrease the number of cars for the next 30 years or so. I think it's just going to push more cars out into the street to have got more cars in the street and we have frontage parking added to it. That does not sound too appealing.
All right, can we put this in the column of wide-ranging opinions? Can we find on that one?
Big irritants.
STRs, could we, can we finish on, on a high note here?
So let me, let me throw my piece out there. I mean, you guys probably know my historical opinion on STRs and we've got to a point where we have a code set that I think we know how to enforce. The problem I have from us, and it's really easy for me as a, as a real estate agent, when someone calls me up and says, hey, can you do STRs? And I say, you know, that's, it's, here's the answer, it's very cut and dry. C1, C2 zone, yes. R1 through R3, no, unless it's your primary residence and then you can do it up to a maximum of 90 days and you have to be into blah, 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 blah. So I can't imagine how the world would work if it were something other than that. And every single property, whenever it was sold, you had to determine whether it could or could not and there was some exception to it. So I feel like the code set that we have in place puts the amount of control we needed over things. And adding that particular language into this code makes it really confusing.
So if you have a four unit cottage cluster, single, I mean, a detached house or all together in one, and you buy one of the units, can you STR out the other three? Or are they sold as separate units and that's not your primary residence and doesn't count, you don't?
I think we have to look at it on a dwelling unit perspective. I mean, that's what our code does.
So, but, but the, the STR thing is, is that it's your primary, it's your listed as your primary residence. If the whole building is your primary residence, you just happen to be renting out three of the units.
I don't, it can't, that doesn't work like that, right?
Okay.
You know, it's, well, there's, they're addressed differently, there, it's a different dwelling unit. I mean, I'm not envisioning that someone does that, but I'm envisioning someone, you know, we got four cottages and someone lives in one of those, their primary and they travel for two months of the summer or something and they should be allowed to do it. And it's just, I just can't imagine how that would, how complicated it would be in the others, in the other world.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to afford our mortgage if we couldn't rent out our spare bedroom. And the, the 90 days a year is super easy to comply with. I think I hit 24 days last year and I don't agree with, well, we can't do STRs for non-owner occupied, so. I don't understand what the problem would be if it was, the owner was living there.
Would, part of it is how, require, requirements for parking. So it's one space for two bedrooms. So if you have, don't have, if you have more than that, do you allow them to share their neighbor's parking? If I have .75 spaces per unit and the whole development has five parking spaces, just for example, across the board, who gets first right of those if they're common?
Who buys them?
I think that's the reality of it is that when we've talked about this .75 in, in, when, when you either go to sell a unit or you go to lease a unit, it's not going to be like, oh, by the way, it's first come, first served. It's going to be like, this is your reserved parking and you own it and you can use it or it's not. That's my experience as a landlord is, you know, just tell everybody parking your space, not in everybody else's.
I, I will just need to assign parking for these licenses.
Yeah.
The STR license.
I am strongly anti-short-term rental on this. I, I understand your point, Bill, that, you know, it kind of adds another layer of code, but it's, it's right here. It's, it's right here in the 1725 that you can't do it. My feeling is that we've already increased density, we're putting people in smaller areas, living together and now you're going to let people turn it into someone's vacation crash pad. I just think that's so intrusive for the other people in those homes. These are supposed to be homes for residents. They shouldn't become vacation party zones and that's exactly what they're going to become. I just, I think it's a terrible idea.
These are, again, these are, I, I, I hear your concern. I'm trying to think like, when I hear you talking, I think you, I, what I, the, the concept I hear is that this is a second homeowner from Portland who's using this and renting it out all the time, that you can't do that.
Right. Look at the people who, you know, go live in their van for three months so they can make bank on their river house, which is what happens on my street and all summer long.
Right.
In my neighborhood. And it's someone and it's their primary home and it's still what happened.
But you can't do that, can you?
Yeah, if it's their primary home, they can. It's their primary drive. They, they take their van and go camping somewhere and they rent their house out to, all summer long.
Yeah, a three-month rental isn't a short-term rental.
Yeah. I just, I mean, this is supposed to, people who are trying to buy a home-
If it's my-
Profit on, you know, I just think short-term rentals destroy communities so badly and now we're, we're trying to create, you know, we're trying to create homes for people and that is not what short-term rentals do. They don't create community or homes for people.
I'm just trying to figure out how to keep it so that people understand the regulation that is in place and what it is. That's the, that's where I'm stuck.
Yeah, I understand that it makes it a little more complicated in the code, but if it's written right into the code, that-
I, I think, you know, for me, I, I think I go along with Tina in that the whole reason we're introducing this new code, this missing middle, is, I mean, right now people can buy short-term, I mean, they can, you know, we can, people can, can go and find a short-term rental type of situation, right? Under the new rules. But if we're going to bring back this missing middle, to me, it feels kind of purposeful, that that is the goal here. And to sort of bring a whole bunch of houses into a bunch of neighborhoods, again, sort of in the idea of, you know, there's a compromise that we're making, right? In terms of, we're giving up some air and some light and, and some grass and we're, we're basically saying we can have density. And what we want out of it is the missing middle for the local workers to be able to work and walk to their place of employment downtown or wherever, right? That's the missing part of the missing middle and, and if we create a whole bunch of short-term rentals, that didn't help what we're trying to do. I think that's my feeling.
And you want to talk about blow, from the rest of the city, man?
Again, Tina?
I said, and I said, then talk about blowback from, from the rest of our city. I mean, as you said, we're asking people to kind of say, okay, this is going to be denser than you're used to. There's going to be more people in these neighborhoods than we're all used to. And now, when summer comes, you know, a chunk of them are going to be vacation rentals. That just sounds like a, you know, recipe for disaster.
I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm just trying to figure out how we manage it and track it and communicate it and I'm just thinking that someone buys one of these things or then someone goes through a, like, just the short-term rental application process. I mean, do you see any concern here administering this, Dustin, when someone goes to apply for one, a short-term rental and?
Yeah, that, it would have to be caught that all of a sudden, if they showed up and they, it was their primary residence, it was in the right zone and they had two parking spaces or a parking space assigned to it, we would have to have some trigger to say what, we just have to be mindful that it was permitted under this code. It, it does become, it presents a challenge that they would, they could slip through because what differentiates, once it's done, approved, built, lived a, I mean, lived in, you know, it, it has all the makings of a regular house to some extent, minus this provision. I mean, it just becomes a little tricky.
Do we call the zone something different then? Instead of just like R1, R2, R3, is it like RM1 or something to signify?
No, no, the, the house needs a label, the group of houses, the label off the street. Welcome to Missing Middle. Sue, Erica?
I also don't, I really don't understand the difference between me having a roommate, which I have, like, six months of the year and me having a guest who's not, I, I would say the majority of people that do hosted home share, STRs are not looking for people who are going to party. They're looking for people that are there to get recommendations from them on how to be a better tourist.
Well, hosted home share is different than vacation rental, so.
Yes.
If you're living, you have a roommate, that's, that's, I don't think anybody's questioning that.
Okay, but that's an STR, that's what I'm-
By the city is, it's, it's a, is lumped into the same, right?
Right, and so, I, I take issue with grouping vacation, vacation rentals.
So I think one of the, one of the goals when people do STRs is to get the income from that, right? That, that's a primary reason people do that. And one of the things that, I, I think changed last meeting, and again, I wasn't there, but we decided not to allow ADUs on missing middle housing. And then that's sure- What's that?
Another issue I think we need to talk about.
Because Greg mentioned that too and I kind of wondered like, why would we not allow ADUs? Because it allows people to get income and therefore afford to buy a home. Although I wondered if that was really how it worked because it simultaneously makes the home that you're building more expensive and makes it harder for people to get into, right? So I'm not, I'm not sure what's cause and effect there, but as opposed to ADR or ST, STRs, if we allowed ADUs as an opportunity for people to have a venue for having additional income, should they want that from their primary residence?
Yeah, the, the code, you know, like the ADU code would allow you to build a large unit and a small unit on one lot. I mean, just like, just like you do today, it's just that we, we calculate them. The other issue becomes, as these things are built, as, as planned unit developments in some way, although not through the PUD process, they're a small configuration of lots with shared access, with shared facilities. The, the units can get built in. I mean, that's, that's part of the accessory dwelling. So there's nothing to prevent you from building and, and having two units on one lot in this, whether they're big or small. It just, what it stops is having two units on one lot and then having a third ADU also being considered on there. And with, without consideration of, of density. Right now, the ADUs are also permitted, we, we have a land use approval for them. It's a limited land use approval, it doesn't require a hearing, but that helps us track and trigger the, the AD, the STR regulations because we have a record of them, you know, a special record for each ADU that goes through. They're also given some deference for utility hookups and connections and they're intentionally small. I mean, they, so it becomes a little tricky as we, we kind of have captured the opportunity for someone to do an ADU. It's just, we call it a unit, a small, that can be on your, your lot or actually you can build it, similar sized unit and have its own lot. I mean, it just, I think it's built into the flexibility of the code. It's just, we just don't refer to it as-
As an ADU. Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, no. I didn't really understand why.
Okay, so given that opportunity exists, I guess I'm more in concurrence that we may not need the option to allow STRs, short-term rentals in these units, because I do kind of agree with Tina on this. I just don't know how you administer it, that's the challenge.
You keeping track here, Dustin?
Yeah. I don't, I don't really have full STR. I have three, three, I have a count of three on this one. So it, it, I don't really have, hasn't really crossed the threshold, but I knew it had to be something that had to be discussed in the code, either to be-
I thought we were all in agreement, we just don't know how you're going to administer it.
No, I don't think we're in agreement, right? So I think Tina, Sue, Mark are saying no STRs. I think Megan, Bill are saying STRs. And Erica could either tie us or-
I'm here.
I'm here. I'm, I'm tipping, I'm tipping us over. Into the no zone.
Yeah, that's four, four, four is a majority.
And we're going to all show up at the hearing for Megan to find out why. Hosted time, hosted home share is lumped into the STR world.
Hosted home share versus vacation rental. They're all STRs. That's, that's the.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I don't, I don't get it and a lot of people afford their homes that way.
Yep. Okay, is that the entire list or is there anything else that somebody wants to bring up on the list?
One, one thing that kind of got left in the dust that I think will, I'll just do is the definition of what is landscape, the definition of what is middle housing. I think those are, those are important items.
Yep. Do I want to raise the front porch?
No. Let's, let's, we're going to have to see this code again, so. I think, and Dustin's making a lot of changes and I'm going to make a motion that I've hit my limit.
Okay. Can we make a motion to make a, can we make a motion to cover the meeting minutes next time?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Unless, unless somebody is just, is there any changes to it? Does anyone have any recommended changes? If it's going to be an exhaustive discussion, we could just, you could take a motion now.
I just give them, I could, or I can make a motion that we pass them.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion that we pass the minutes as presented. So do I need to read the dates off my computer?
I think you're good. There's a whole bunch of dates. Do we have a second?
I second that.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the ones in the bundle. By Tina and seconded by Megan. All in favor? Oh, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes, minutes are done. Okay. So thanks Dustin. We will look for your update based on tonight's comments. Let us know what you want to do with the date two weeks out.
Uh, that would be, so that would be the Tuesday, the ninth. I may, I may have a conflict because I live my life around Monday nights, so let me. We work on that. We should continue to a date certain since the hearing is open.
So that would be, we're talking about Tuesday, the 16th of February.
Oh, sorry. I will definitely be gone on the 16th.
Okay, so we're definitely not meeting that week.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking for my, my, my life a week out. 16 works for me.
Okay, so. Everyone ready to come back on the 16th and continue, close out this discussion?
Good.
Yes.
Yep.
Close it out. I like it. I'll bring you back an FAR analysis, kind of some, some discussions and we'll. And the revisions based on this.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.